At this time please, with Jesus' joy and with the glorious clap offering, people of God, let us make welcome our Father in God, Professor Atsibey, for the guidelines of Bible study. God bless you sir.
Hallelujah! I hope you had a wonderful night. God bless you. Quickly, we would go into the Bible study for today. The study for today is study number two. Study number two, please. Bible study number two. Please be reminded, facilitators, you need to make sure that the participants are captured using the QR code, as we had already discussed. Delegate that to somebody who would do that job effectively. And then, please, take note that those who don't have the tag, take down their particulars, their name, phone number, WhatsApp number please, their dioceses, and that would do. Alright, please, you can pray and start now. Your time has started counting.
From the scripture to the person, instilling his biblical background and what he knows about the Bible, and how to live as the Bible prescribed. So the question they had is Samwell's choice reflect his commitment to living a life that represents God. He was not ashamed of his condition that he don't have it, but yet in that condition, he was able to, he was able to express himself. He was able to tell the young man, "Look, this is a wrong life. The scripture does not permit this kind of life." So the life of Samwell is an example for us. In respect of the situation we find ourselves, we should be bold enough to tell people why we live the way we live. We should be bold enough to tell people why we should live this way as Christians. Amen. So we go to the next in our passage for today, 2 Corinthians 5:20 and Colossians 3:1-17. Let's open our Bibles. If you find any of these, you help us. Hallelujah. Okay, let's take 2 Corinthians first, then you take Colossians.
2 Corinthians 5:20 says, "We are there for Christ ambassadors, as though God we are making His appeal through us. We employ you on Christ behalf, to be recourse to God."
Okay, our first question says, "What does 2 Corinthians 5:20 say about the role of believers as ambassadors for Christ? I want us to give our comments." We read 2 Corinthians 5:20, that's the first passage we read. So the question is, what does he say about the role of believers as ambassadors of Christ? I need one or two persons to talk on this, then we run. Okay.
Our role is to present Christ anywhere we find ourselves.
Okay, to represent Christ anywhere we find ourselves. Another person.
She said, "As though God we are making His appeal through us, so now, our role on this earth is to show Christ, to show God to the world."
Okay, to show Christ, to show God to the world, reflecting Christ to the world. In other words, our role is to represent God. Amen? Our role is to do what? Represent God as ambassadors. Now the next question there says, "What does it mean for us to represent God in a world that may not share our faith?" Of course, we are living in a world that may not share our faith. Especially if you are living in a place where those you are staying with or working with are not Christians. So what does it mean to represent Christ in such a situation?
Such a situation, it means reflecting the character of Christ. Like reflect the character, patience, peace, kindness. To live like Christ lived, to understand and see Christ. It's not just saying Christ. It means living the kind of life Christ lived, so that people, when people see you, they see Christ, they see the character of Christ.
Okay, she said it's to reflect the attributes, the characters of Christ. Showing love, patience, you know, manifesting the fruits of the Spirit. Any other person? Okay, sir. Hallelujah. Okay. Showcasing the character of God and then standing firm in what you believe in. Standing firm in what you believe in. Inasmore as you show love, inasmore that you be patient with them, inasmore that you have, you know, you care for them, but above all, you must stand firm in what you believe. Because when you show love and are standing firm in the principles of the scripture, that means you may not be able to get them. So you must stand firm in what you believe in. Question two there says, "According to Colossians 3:1-4, what does it mean to see your hearts, to set your hearts on things above? What does it mean to set your hearts on things above? I need two persons also to talk on this. Colossians 3:1-4, what does it mean to set your heart on things above? Okay? Hallelujah. You pass it part of my class, Ami. So, get ready to do something. Okay. Forgetting every filthy lives, being dead to sin, and focus on the things that glorifies God. The next person.
Setting ourselves, setting our hearts on things above, setting our hearts on heavenly deeds. The things in the world are like, they have temporal value, but the things of Christ have eternal value. And that's what we should be looking up to as Christians, as children of God. We should pick up things that have eternal value and not temporal things here and there.
Look out for things that have eternal value. Raise your hand. Okay, knowing that the things we see on earth, they are vanity, they will surely pass away. So let's have eyes on things that will last forever. And then the next part of that question says, "How does this change the way we live and interact with the world? How does it change the way we live and interact with the world?" Somebody at the back there should get ready to give us answers now. That's your friend. Continue.
How do we know that we are in this world, in the presence of this world? And we then look at this somehow? So, since we are in this world, and since we don't live like them, we bring the kingdom of God. So we are to bring the mind of God to them that doesn't actually move about the kingdom. Praise God.
Hallelujah. The next person. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. So, okay, the last person, let's hear from her. Okay. Let's hear from her, then we will go to the next question.
So there's a language in the right side of speaking, you are representing for them, yes. So what you do here, they rely on you, they trust you. You make sure that those characters are in your business. So without those nice side, they're going past you. So they are still, they are still, they are hoping to, they are watching you, okay? So you are not trying to emote them or trans, interact them like, oh, but you are trying to use your own life kingdom to protect the environment because you are not that.
Okay. So if I know that, if we have this mentality, it will change the way we walk and the way we do this. How you relate with people? When somebody offend you, the way you react, if you know where you are coming from, you will react, you know, in a negative way. You will able to react in a way that the person will see that actually you are different. It will also affect the way we grab things. Ah? The way we go for the things of the world, grab things. We realize that these things we end here and will not go with us to eternity. So we be careful. We be careful. It calls for carefulness. It calls for proper representation of who sent us. Amen. We're going to the heart now, what is my attitude? So the first question that says, "What does cultivating a heart of compassion, kindness, and humility shape our attitude towards others? How does cultivating the heart of compassion?" You know, we looked at that in the first question, the head question, where she mentioned that you show compassion, show love. So how does that shape our attitude towards others? And what does this reveal about our relationship with God? I need three persons to talk on this. I don't know if we get the question right. Uh-huh. The question is, how does cultivating a heart of compassion, a heart of kindness, a heart of humility, how does this shape our attitude towards others?
Praise God.
Hallelujah.
I would say we have five boosters. Amati, Ma, Luke, Charles, and they both come me and you. Now, most people now, that's in the world now, they don't study the Bible as often, but they study with me and you. So that we showing compassion, showing kindness, showing love. These are the attributes they want, that they will see and they will know that we are not just like them, that we are revealing the person. But if we show the opposite, we are revealing the word, the devil. So these attributes we show, and we bring them to God. This is how we are dealing with God, we have grown God for quite a time. Praise God.
Hallelujah. Let's hear from you. Hallelujah.
This is what is my attitude. And others, we didn't have to have a lot of stuff. Shape our pattern, we are scared. Alright, from this side, we say, we receive Christ. We are being changed. We will not have this kind of kindness, love to those others. So as a Christian, as a child of God, that have received love. So we will move and see, we have this compassion for him, for that person. Yes, someone that is humble, humble, you have, you have.
Okay. I think we're in attitude now, this issue of personalizing it. So when you answer, you use yourself "I", ah? Instead of "they" and "you".
Okay. On the aspect, now then, on the aspect of love. Now, I have to understand that I as a person, I will not love my neighbor as I love myself. I will love my neighbor as Christ loved the church. Just, that means that I may not have good, but my neighbor needs good. But I have the money to get it. I can get it for my neighbor without getting it for myself.
Okay.
So, if I do this now, and this minister and others come, and this minister of celebration, then with this love, I can't give to others what I cannot give to myself. Because God made that life for us. And from there, I have to learn, I have to help others in order to achieve theirs without putting myself first. Thank you.
Okay, having a heart of compassion will help me as a person to put myself in the shoes of others. It will help me to put myself in the shoes of others, knowing that if I'm in the same situation they are, I will need help. So that heart will help you to do what? Reach out to others. This issue of kindness, just like you mentioned, what would you want somebody to do for me? What I want somebody to do for me? When I'm in need? Kindness will help me. If I have the heart of kindness, it will help me to reach out to others. That same way. Amen? Amen? So the next question, I say, "What does this reveal about our relationship with God?" So this is of having compassion, kindness, and humility towards others. What does it reveal? When we show compassion to others, you show love to others, you relate well with others, what does it reveal about our relationship with God? Does it reveal anything about our relationship with God? So what does it reveal? Okay, ma?
We become better representative of Christ.
Okay, I personalize it.
I, I become a better representative of Christ.
Okay. She said, "If we help her to become a better representative of Christ", somebody will answer. Shows that I personalize it. Okay. You find out, you find out that if you show this attitude of compassion and kindness and humility, what it reveals is that you have a good relationship with God. You are walking in the path God wants you to walk. But if you lack this issue of compassion, even amongst those you are sent to as ambassadors, where you are, you don't show compassion, maybe because you say, "This person is a sinner", or "This person disturbs me, so I will not love him or her", it shows that there is problem with your relationship with God. Because if it were to be God, God will also do what? Show love and show compassion. And that was exemplified in the life of Jesus. The Bible says, "Why we are what? Yes, sinners. Christ did what? Died for us." Okay, the next question there says, "As an ambassador for Christ, how should your heart reflect an attitude for reconciliation, attitude of reconciliation, and a desire to lead others towards God's truth and love? So how should your heart reflect an attitude of reconciliation? And a desire to lead others towards God's truth and love as an ambassador? What does it mean? We see people going the wrong way. What should be your heart reaction? How will you feel? What should you do? What are in the position to do? We need about two or three persons to... Okay? I. Okay. She will have a heart to reach out to the person. She will pray for the person and also advise the people. Okay, sir. Okay, the last one, then we run. Ah, 10 minutes.
My people perish because of the lack of knowledge. So people naturally, some persons, they think, they might think that they have been condemned, they tell that there's no hope for them. So as Christians and as an ambassador of Christ, I will give them that message of hope. I will tell them that Christ has not condemned them, that they have a chance again at life, Christ. Give them that message of hope and salvation.
Okay. It will make us, because of time, to have a heart of passion. Passion. You know, if you are passionate about anything and see something going wrong, it will be uncomfortable, two of us. So have passion for souls, have passion for those God have placed you in their custody. And have a desire to see that those living wrong around you turns to God. It's going to help you to have a positive look on life. Now, a brief on what the other passages are, those is a kind of enlightenment on what we have already discussed. And living as ambassadors who must live to represent Christ, our lives must represent Him. And we must understand our role as ambassadors for Jesus. Just as we saw in 2 Corinthians 5:20. And we must also learn to set our hearts on things above. We talked about that. Don't be distracted with the things you see around you. From our introduction, you see that young boy, Samwell. He had opportunity to, but he stood his ground. So we must learn from him and set our hearts on things above. We must also cultivate godly values, embody Christ's values and character in our lives. We mentioned the things like love, all the fruits of the Spirit. They are values and characters of Christ. And we must embody, we must make sure it becomes part of us so that we will be able to represent Christ wherever we are found. And we must live a life of consistency and we must be authentic. Not living, maybe, you know, some persons, when they go to a place, because one or two persons know them, they will maintain as a Christian. But when they go to somewhere that place where nobody knows them, they turn, they become part of those people. Samwell did not live like that. The Samwell we saw in our introduction did not live like that. And Christ did not live like that. So we must be authentic and consistent in what we believe and in our work with God. It's only when we authentic and consistent that we can impact our world. That is the only way we can impact our world. If we are not consistent, we are not authentic, we cannot impact our world. Because you will live a double life. And when you live a double life, you are not an ambassador for Christ. And we must rely on the Holy Spirit. It is the Holy Spirit that produces these characters in us, that produces the fruits in us. So living a life without the Holy Spirit as a Christian, you are just, you are just, you are just bringing yourself out to be ridiculed and to be mocked. Because one little thing will come up, you are off the gear. So for us to live as ambassadors, we must have the Holy Spirit. The character of Jesus provide a perfect model for how to represent God in the world. His love, humility, obedience, truth, forgiveness, servant relationship, servant leadership, lifestyle, and joy are all qualities that all Christians should strive to embody. As we reflect on these characteristics in our lives, we demonstrate the nature of God to the world around us, drawing others to Him through our actions, words, and attitudes. Representing God is not just about what we say, but how we live. And by following the example of Jesus, we can be faithful ambassadors of His kingdom. So it's much more than words. It comes to our action, our daily lifestyle. And of course, where we stay and people interact with, they will be able to look at our life and say, "This one is really an ambassador of Christ or not." When you say something and you don't live at that thing, you are living a double standard life. I pray that God will help us to represent God wherever we are found, in Jesus' name. We're going to our question five, the hands now. How we can obey? The first question says, "How can I actively reflect God's love and compassion in my daily interactions with others, especially those who may be difficult to love?" I hope you know that there are some persons that are difficult to love. Eh? You are trying to do good for them, but the good you are doing, they are never seen it. So how do you reflect God's love and compassion in interacting with such kind of persons? Okay?
To reflect it to God, we should practice of emulateness, intentionally live a life of...
Personalize it now, "How can you, how can I?" I will.
Okay, I should intentionally emulate and live the life and the character of Jesus, also involving the fruit of the Holy Spirit, which is love, justice, and mercy. Then those who are difficult to love, we should, like, some people need listening ears, but they are not giving listening ears. Like, somebody need your help to stick to it. Be like, "I'm busy, I don't have this time." We should try and give some people listening ears, yes, and also show sympathy. Some people, like, for example, for example, they are rushing for food. Somebody may feel that it's very good for you. They are rushing for food. You cannot just say, "Sorry, oh." And also, you speak kindly to people. Some people use critical and harsh words on people. It's not nice. So you relate to, emulate the character of the people and also the character of Jesus.
Okay. Last person. I'll take two because of our time, they've given us time.
As for me, like my sister said, I will listen actively. I will give that person listening ears. And secondly, I will show kindness. And thirdly, I will forgive easily. I know that some people say, "It's not so easy to forgive and forget." But you will just forgive, overlook it, there's some... Before, I don't do overlooked things. So we must dash it out. But now, it's like, I will just, it's as if they don't even get to me. I don't even look at it. I don't even go in and think about it. I think that will help me a lot to overcome some certain things that might have resulted to chaos or something.
Hallelujah. Let me just, okay? Praise God. Look it fast.
My, uh, let me just, my heart, or our heart, is very delicate. Because out of the heart, the mouth will speak it, and all the issues of, 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 of my heart, you know, so. So now, I will say that first thing I will do, as I come into Christ, I will continually pray that God should help my heart. Because I know that I will see the enemies, I know I will see, even though that I want to help, they will not want me to help them. And they will always, and they will judge me, and they will fight me. We see that, as a lot of people, even when I am a teacher, we see them a lot. Now, I will not look at what they are doing, what I will still continue doing. I will continue showing them love, even when they are showing me hatred. And I will continue praying that God help my heart to, I know that this part are doing me wicked. Because it will not be easy. It will be easy. They are trying to help a child, and the man that wants to bite you in the school, we've seen a lot as teachers. Praise God.
Hallelujah. Okay, thank you for your answers. We don't have time, maybe subsequent. Thank you for your answers. So listening becomes very, very important. Eh? Some persons whose heart I had in, it will require patience and you coming down to their level to actually get them. It requires patience and you coming down to their level. So I must learn how to listen, just like she mentioned. I must learn how to listen. Then I must show empathy, put myself in their shoe. Put myself in their shoe. Why are they rejecting God's love? Some might be, they have gone through lots of issues that have hardened their hearts. So I must learn how to what? Put myself in their shoes, show empathy, and then listen. Like he mentioned, the place of prayer is also important. I must learn how to pray. I must learn how to pray, pray for that person. Commit the person to God before you go and show whatever you want to show, even before you talk to the person. Amen? The next question, in what areas of my life do I need to practice greater humility? This one now requires, um, a practical life experience. We know ourselves, eh? In the course of our interaction with people, there are things that somebody must have done or the reaction of somebody, and they want to react. So this question is trying to let us get it from ourselves now, not just what Mr. A there will do, but what me, my own area of my life, my own life, not the life of Mr. B. So in what area of my life do I need to practice greater humility? And how can I serve others with a Christ-like attitude as he demonstrated?
For me, I have to develop a passion for reconciliation. It should be the one that, that, that engage between people that have conflict. And then it should also model forgiveness, just as stress as forgiveness. And then we should also learn to bridge gaps between God and sinners and those people that are in already fractured relationship with God.
Okay. It's that you need to build, um, passion, passion for souls or for persons. Any other hands? How can I, what areas of my life do I need to practice humility? Let's hear from him, him and then her. Alleluia. Alleluia.
Because the Lord is here now, help. I have a need, so I don't need your help. So what I do is, during that time of I have a need, I will deliver people to the door of God. So as I will do, so as a cause of this God, I think I will have the intention and then come back. I, I need to make sure I join you.
Thank you very much. Let's hear from him.
Praise God.
Alleluia.
One area of my life that I will, I will say that I need to practice more humility is now looking at maybe achievements and maybe knowledge. Then we, I will not say, okay, I have known, I have known, I have known. I, I don't want to learn from others again, or maybe I don't want to sit and learn, or what is, is that's a preaching. Because we do it a lot in the justice, when that's, that's a preaching. What is a preaching? Because you have, you have learned, if you feel you have learned from Sermon, from Aramaic and others. So if you feel what they are preaching is not what, is not right, praise God.
Alleluia.
I want to talk about humility one. So first of all, humility means making yourself available to those who cannot afford you. So you know, some people, they will feel like they are too big.
Use yourself now, this one is not some people. Uh-huh.
Me, I'm also, look, I feel like I'm too big. I will not talk to somebody that may be smaller, say, this one is not in my class, I cannot talk to this one. So we should learn to like, let everybody, let's take everybody along as one, like, make yourself available.
Okay. You want to say something? Okay, let's hear from him. I've not heard from. Alleluia.
You know, when you know something, you go like, you go out, you want to go out.
Okay. For my, later on, later on. For myself, my own is to listen, you know? My own area, my own area of life, how I can practice humility? Greater humility is to listen. Is to listen. Because sometimes I will be talking with somebody, someone will be talking with me, and it's like, what the person is saying is, I'll just, then my, this thing does not, it does not relate, it does not have anything. So my own is, I must learn how to do what? Listening. Listening is my own. Okay, the next question, that will go into help my relationships. Are there areas in my relationship where I need to practice greater patience, humility or servant relationship as Jesus demonstrated? I don't know if you get the question. Eh? Look at your life now critically, in line of what we have studied, eh? We look at living a life that represents God. All what we have discussed, is there any area of your life where you can practice greater what? Patience? Humility? Or servant leadership as Jesus demonstrated? This one is, is a direct question now to us. It's not something you ponder, I want, I want to hear us talk.
Okay, let me go.
Okay.
Okay. Personally. My relationship with people, there are certain things people will do. And I would say, uh, this is common sense, I should know, so why would people react like this? So, um, how to practice greater, sorry, my relationship now, I'm going to display patience, humility and servant leadership is to give them grace. Someone can actually be going through something that will make them react a certain way to things. So I should give them grace, knowing that we are humans and we can actually fall short, you know? Give them grace and understand, so use them also, be patient with them. People are, people will grow and learn every day. Teach them with, um, love and humility, correct them with kindness as well.
Okay.
Praise God.
Alleluia.
I would say that my, my area that I need to practice patience, humility and servant leadership is that my relationship with people, I would love to be, now be the one going mostly, not, not expect it too much. Just most attempts, we want to expect, if the person not do, I not go, if the person not call me, I not go call. The relative, so let, I, I, I would, I would say that, okay, I will do more of the what, of the calling, of the what, of the reaching out to what, to people. Then I will be patient, I will listen to them, I will hear from them. No matter how the person, that person is big or small, I will hear what person may say. Just maybe one thing I just said, even if, even if I say many things, one thing that be important and I, and I will learn.
Okay, let's hear from him.
As for myself, I have this, this lifestyle attitude or issue of not taking someone seriously. So no matter how you put it, no matter how you try to reform that or something, it's not it. And the way, if you are talking to me on that thing, I will be laughing. So some people get angry over it, that I don't take it serious. Even if you say that this place is, uh, that is higher on the mountain, it doesn't leave me. Though I think I should, in this aspect, learn to, to have patience and even listen and even take it serious. Or if it's what I'm taking serious.
Okay, the last question there says, help me. How can I actively seek reconciliation and peace in my relationships? Especially when there are conflicts or misunderstanding, reflecting Christ's role as the peacemaker? When there are conflicts and misunderstanding in your relationship, how can I seek peace?
We all know that there are types of difference, that if you tell somebody to move them, please excuse me, I'm sorry. Please, I want to do this for you. If somebody offends you or you offend.
Me.
Okay, if I offend somebody or someone offends me, I should not have tried, I should, I should.
Praise the Lord. This morning in our Bible study, we looked at study two with the topic, living a life that represents God. And from the study, we discovered that to live a life that represents God, it begins with a shift in our focus. Our focus must shift. And by that, every ambassador is required not to have a will, desire or choice of his own, but to submit to the will, desire and choices of God daily. And there is a dress code for all ambassadors of Christ. That dress code is invisible, yet very, very visible. In Colossians chapter three, verse 12 through to 14, Apostle Paul describes that dressing code. According to his description, the dress code for ambassadors has the top of compassion. That top is embroidered with kindness. That top has a shoulder pad of humility. It has a skirt or trouser of gentleness. The buttons are buttons of patience. It has a shoes of forgiveness. And that dress is headfirst with a belt of love. So if any man must please God as an ambassador of Christ, he must put on this dress, reflecting the kingdom lifestyle daily and shining as a light in the world every day. And then Apostle Paul calls us to rely on the Holy Spirit. He is the one that quickens our mortal bodies and gives us the grace to be consistent with this dress code of the kingdom. So if we must please God, we must learn to rely on the Holy Spirit. And this invisible dress code must become very visible to men as we relate with them and interact with the society every day. This is the challenge before us, this is the responsibility, and this is the call of God upon our lives. Let us pray. If you wish and you have made a resolve in your heart to live a life that pleases God, all the days of your life here on earth, turn that resolution into prayers as we sing this song together. I will make my life your dwelling place. I will build your throne in my life. Come, Father, come, Son. Come, Holy Spirit. Come and take your place in my life. Lord, we submit to you. We give up our wills, we give up our desires, we give up our choices and we take up your will, your desire, your choice as our own. Please help us to remain true to this commitment, for in Jesus' name we have prayed.